Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. Madam Secretary, can we have the roll call, please?
Chairman Cattulli.
Here.
Commissioner Bellamy.
Here.
Commissioner Goszewski. Commissioner Horton.
Here.
Commissioner Oler.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Commissioner Wise. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any communications?
No, we can start with new business.
Okay. I think we need to approve the minutes first. We have minutes to approve, right?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone review the minutes and are we ready to approve them if there is no comment?
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those ayes have it. Okay, new business.
Okay, so we have item 6A, annexation and zoning designation Z2511, with a petition to annex Point 22 acres on Wiley Drive. The lot is currently unincorporated and zoned, single-family 40 in Ori County. This petition is requesting the zoning district R1, which R1 district permitted use is going to be single-family detached dwellings. The parcel does contain a single-family home. Surrounding parcels within city limits are zoned R1. Surrounding Atlantic Beach parcels are zoned R2 and Main Street. So just go over some key points. The proposed zoning designation R1 is a primary recommended zoning district within the compliance index. The proposed R1 zoning is consistent with the residential suburban land use classification in the 2018 comprehensive plan. The uses permitted in the R1 district would be appropriate in the area. Current public rights of way serve this area and public water and sewer are available to the parcel. And there were no issues at the staff level. So if you do choose to forward to City Council with recommendations of approval, I recommend option A where necessary to implement the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Any commissioners have any comments or discussions about this?
I don't think so.
We did take a look at this at this morning's workshop and seemed to be pretty clean. I'll ask for public comment. Anyone in the public have anything to say about this annexation? Nope. Last chance for comments by the commissioners. I'll call for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the annexation and zoning petition as submitted.
I'll second.
All right, vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Onto item 6B. This is zoning ordinance text amendment ZTX 25-9. This is amendment creating standards for propane tanks. We discussed it this morning at workshop. Our ordinance currently allows HVAC units, pool equipment, generators to encroach in the side and rear setbacks, but it is silent on propane tanks. So they aren't allowed in the setbacks, even when they are permitted under the fire code. And the BZA has been dealing with a lot of cases, variance requests to allowing them to place the propane tanks in the side yards or rear yards. The tanks fall within the limits allowed by the fire code. But our ordinance just doesn't allow it, so these requests are going to BZA. This amendment would allow up to two above-ground propane tanks, not exceeding 125 gallons each, to encroach into those setbacks for the side and rear yards. And it's inserted into the ordinance in section 23105. It mirrors the language that we use for HVAC units, swimming pool equipment, and non-portable electric generators. Just adding, and not more than two above-ground propane tanks, not exceeding 125 gallons each, may encroach into side yard and rear yard setback areas. And there's no comments from staff. There's, uh, everyone discussed and everyone's in favor of it. This would go to City Council with your recommendation for the meeting on September 15th.
Any comments or discussion about this text amendment?
I think we discussed it pretty thoroughly. And it falls in line with those other items.
Right. And it is needed. It's needed.
Right. Plus, there's other requirements covering these tanks, such as bar and so forth. So, okay, anyone from the public have any comment on this text amendment? No? Okay. Then let's move on with the...
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the zoning ordinance text amendment ZTX-25-9 as submitted.
Second.
Last chance for comments. Okay, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Item 6C is sketch plan SGB 25-19. This is a sketch plan of subdivision creating 41 residential lots, open space and public rights of way at Harper Valley off of Tommy Chestnut Road. Just a little reminder, the sketch plan, we created that this year. It proceeds the formal preliminary plot application and does not authorize any land disturbance or construction. Any trees approved in this process for removal that are over 24 inches still have to go through BZA. But the intent is to protect mature trees that are of good quality. And this subdivision, it's 13.2 acres, it's undeveloped and vacant. It's zoned R1A. And we have included all trees eight inches and above. They're creating 41 residential lots for single-family homes. There's open space and public rights of way within the development. There, again, all the trees are identified over eight inches, but there's, um, there's no notes about the quality of the trees. That none of that has been provided. Zoning had a few points for the preliminary phase, the next phase of development, but nothing, they were fine with the sketch plan phase. Public Works also was fine with the sketch plan, but there's a few comments noted in the staff report for the preliminary plot, the next phase. We discussed it this morning and I think the applicant is here. I know the Planning Commission had some questions, so...
Okay. Any questions by the commissioners?
So this morning was discussed the length and some of those trees that were out of the platform of the homes that were in the backyards that were going to be removed. So as well as some of these trees, there's no photos that we could actually look at to get a better idea? Does the applicant have some information in regards to that for us?
Hey, I'm Michael Genovese with G3 Engineering on behalf of Chris Manning Communities for this project. Essentially, we are just requesting to move these trees based on our existing topo. We are trying to maintain grade, as in the left side of the site is basically in a hole. But essentially, I did thorough grading exercises to save as many trees as I could possibly at this time, in this stage of the planning process, while still maintaining, you know, storage for your pond requirements and your runoff rates. That's really all I have at this time.
Just an observation, I noticed that the plan shows you're only saving two trees and they're both gum trees.
Should be more than two, sir.
16 and Lot 22, they're the only two in your, in your grid or whatever that list of trees being saved. That would be required BZA approval, so...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's just an observation.
Yes. There should be two gums, a 25-inch and a 28-inch.
Correct.
I think what the question was this morning was that because of the topographical, because we didn't really have a topo with this, that was requiring you to have to do away with all the trees for grading purposes?
Yes, sir.
And that was our question.
Yes. The grading is a pretty large issue on this one for saving those trees as they fall in the low area of the site.
You touched on that. That's why I was wanting you to continue there and finish filling in with that.
I'm sorry, I can't really hear you.
No, you tou-, I'm sorry. You touched on the fact that we were talking about that low area earlier.
Yes, sir.
We didn't go into it in any detail. But that's what we were concerned with was how much massive amount of trees were to be disturbed or destroyed or removed. Was that because of the topography of the property?
Yes, sir. Yeah, mainly it's because of the topography.
On the ones that back up to the waterway over there, where we're just really taking every tree out of the pretty large back lots there, is that, is that an area, is that a low area right next to it?
I believe that area is, um, once we get further into actually designing and get more into depth in the grading, we could potentially save more of those trees back behind those lots. I didn't want to give you a plan that shows a bunch of trees being saved and then we get down the line and then, you know, I'm like, I get thrown into a loophole. So I'd rather show you the trees that I'm 100% certain that I can save and go from there.
As far as the layout of the lots and the street, the street, Marshmallow Court, seems to have stub ends. Is there a future plan to connect to adjacent subdivisions or something like that?
On the north side?
Yeah.
No, sorry, we were just using that as a fire, basically, it's essentially a fire turnaround without having to do a cul-de-sac. And it also provides us frontage along those four lots at the top better than a cul-de-sac layout would. Up here. You got to maintain that drainage ditch because it's the primary outfall for like the entire...
Any further questions or discussions?
I know you said you really got to, you know, you don't really have a grading plan yet. So the one trees that you're saying that you're going to leave, what kind of, what can you, what kind of assurance can you provide us that you're going to really save those?
Can I send you a grading plan? That's the only way I can ensure you. I have one prepared.
What kind of warranty can we get from you saying, hey, if we, if we lose that one, we'll do something? But I'm just asking the question. I mean, we got so few that we need to protect. We really want to make sure that...
Those are protected.
That they're protected.
Yeah, like I said, we can provide a thorough grading plan. I'll show tree protections around it. All the grading will be stopped at basically the drip line of the tree.
This will be done at your engineering stage, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we prepared them and we ran into the issue of, you know, we had to get the master plan approval. I guess that was a new thing that we're doing in setting up our lease now. So kind of through a loop. But yes, everything's prepared. I just need to get it in front of you guys.
I think we'd like to see that, just to make sure.
Well, that's going to happen at the next phase. We got to deal with what we've got in front of us.
Suzanne, so again, just to reiterate, at this point, we could just say, hey, we would like to see something additional in regards to how those trees are either going to be removed or saved when that addition, that next step comes to us. So the commission at that time will have an opportunity to share some more concern in regards to the amount of trees where they could give us a better idea or look at it.
In this phase, in this phase of the process, you're telling them to move forward with construction drawings. You're basically saying they can get all the lots they have shown. Staff will review the construction plans and make sure that the protected trees will actually be protected and accommodated in that next step. But, you know, if, when you prove this, you're saying move forth. All these lots are great. All this, this layout conceptually works.
Like we discussed this morning, around Lot 2930 in that corner in the cul-de-sac, it seems to be a lot that's, you know, being removed to get usage out of there.
You said the left side of this, yes, looking at it, the left side with the cul-de-sac, is where the load problem was. That's...
It's about three to four feet lower than the entire site.
Okay, so that was what kind of...
That's what dictated that in the, mainly in all those lots over there. Yes, sir. And then towards the left property line, it goes back up about three or four feet. So I'm trying to maintain positive drainage at the same time to do what I can to save the trees.
We were just trying to also justify not having the topography of the property, justify while we would just wipe out all...
It would be much easier to have a topography to go with this.
I guess our concern is, is that we are, now that we have these drawings and we're showing, we're seeing what we're, what we have, the idea is if we give it our best effort, what can we save? I guess. And it's, uh, so that's what we're trying to do, to understand what, what's reasonable save and what we can save. And of course, to a certain degree, we have to rely on the information that we have here. And, uh, I mean, it really would be nice, I just can't believe we got to take all of those along the waterway out because that's really the higher point of the property. But, um...
So correct me if I'm wrong, Suzanne. We can move forward with this and we have another opportunity to see this in a second part of the phase? Or is this, when we get through, we don't see it anymore?
You will see it twice more, but you're approving this conceptual lots now. You're saying that, yes, all of these lots work.
The thing is, is this, I ask it as simple as I can. What we're saying right now is every red dot on here that represents a tree is going to disappear and we're approving that.
Yes.
Any further questions or comments?
This being a new process, Suzanne, this lives and dies with the Planning Commission? This doesn't go to council for any reason, does it?
No. And I mean, you have options. If there's questions you have about the trees that you're, you know, you can ask. Can you provide some quality photos, measures about what we're removing? You can, if there's certain trees you're, you're fine with, you, I mean, you can pass it. You can, there's all sorts of options.
I think, I think we learned something about this process tonight in that, as you said, that topography, topographical plan would, I think, give us more information about why you're doing what you have to do with the trees, so... May not be a requirement, but it might be advisable to do that, you know?
I think it would be a good idea to include a little background on, instead of just a site plan showing trees be removed, it would, it would be smarter to show the reason why.
The newer process for us, so...
Yeah.
I think it's, unfortunately, you guys, the applicants are kind of getting that a little bit...
We're like one of the first ones that went through.
So we're learning along with you guys, but it's, I think it's extremely tough for us to determine if there's salvageable trees or not. This may be the only plan, but I think it's tough to determine at this point, for me at least.
Did you say you had a topography, a topographical plan sheet?
I have one already, yes, sir. Prepared, as well as the grading and drainage plans that all show trees as be saved, how they're being saved, grading to the drip lines, all the necessary information.
I think that would be good, at least maybe some photographs showing us, you know, these different areas and kind of what those trees look like. I've been out there and, and, you know, taken a few photographs and looked at the property, of course, you know, and it, it, there's, there's a lot of trees on it, but of course I can't tell the quality of all of them. But of course, all the water we've had there, green as they can possibly be, but...
Mr. Chairman, I'd be more comfortable if we were able to get additional information that we could look at.
I'm thinking along those lines. Would it, I'd just like to know, would it create some difficulty for you to come back with that additional information?
No, sir.
Okay, so if we postpone it to the next meeting, can we do that?
I don't see a reason why. I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't care. This is, I assume this is the, I can't hear very good all you guys talking, but this is the first time you guys are going through this new process? Okay. And obviously, we're the guinea pigs for now, which is fine. So I guess you can bring all you need to show them what we're going to do and why we have to do it and all that. And, you know, I don't have a problem with that at all, no.
Okay.
Certainly make it easier on the next, the next one.
Yeah. Okay, well then...
Can you be clear exactly what you want us to bring so that you guys can...
Yeah. Well, I think that the topography would be a start. And unless there's some additional information that you guys are looking at...
Yeah, he mentioned he had the plan that showed the protective process for the trees. That would be the part to see that you're worried about the tree. That would be the piece we needed to see as much as the topography. We understand now the topography is dictating a lot of this.
Right.
But I think if we see the tree preservation plan for the rest of it, then we might can make some sense.
Maybe get some information, you know, some photographs or something so we can get some general idea about the quality of the trees that were, you know...
What Ed is, yeah, what Ed's suggesting here is, I think the best idea is if you can show the tree preservation plan.
We need to justify what looks like a clear-cut situation to...
Yes, sir.
Be that we don't want in the beginning to set a precedent that we're going to strip every piece of land down.
That's not the goal.
And I know it's not. I'm not accusing you of that. Please understand. I'm a tree hugger, by the way. I hate to see a quick cut. I hate it.
Adds character to the site.
All right, then, let's, uh, let's take some action on this by postponing it. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to we, that we postpone. I'll make a motion that we postpone this until...
Wait a minute.
You got some public comment?
Oh, okay. My mistake. Okay. Let's ask for some public comment. Anyone from the public like to? We need, we'll need your name and address, please.
They didn't give her names, no. Jay Lorick, Palm Harbor, President of HOA. Live in Palm Harbor, right next door to this subdivision. And, um, I mean, we're, so, you know, Chris Manning's building in our community now, right? And he, and we have no issue with Chris Manning. He's been very good to us. We've got a good working relationship with him. We're actually working on another subdivision of his to the south. I think it's called, I think it's, whatever it's called. But we're worried about the trees in the buffer zone and the nice trees. So this lot here, a little left, has some beautiful pine trees, right? They're probably 30, 40, 50 feet along, along the, along the, uh, the left side and it curves around. So what, I mean, we just want to go on record that we would like to work with the city and the tree, the tree, um, the tree team or whatever. And then with these guys from Manning is kind of work with them and try to come up with a good solution to save as many trees as we can along the buffer zone. Because they are, if you go down Chestnut there and you look to the right when you get to Palm Harbor where the water, the waterfalls are, you see a nice, beautiful line of the tall giant pine trees, which, you know, that's your concern. It sounds like you don't want to just strip cut it. And there's also a 100-foot easement there, down there where the, where the four lots are. To the left, there's a 100-foot easement right away that Palm Harbor has. There's a big trench that works there. So there's a lot of trees there that which, which will be, which, which can, which will be good anyways, right? So that'd be, that's going to be good for the, you know, to keep those trees there. But I just wanted to just go on record that we came to a meeting and that we just want to continue to work with the city and if anything's made to cut trees, that we'd be notified that we can maybe work with, with the team here and preserve as many trees as we can. That's, that's all I have. Davey, Davey, anything, Dave? Any questions? But I would, I would recommend you go out there because it is a nice piece of property and there is some nice trees in there. But it's, uh, again, it's, it's really nice, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comment.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Is your friend, are you from a different community or? Okay, okay, I just wondered. Understand. Understand. Thank you.
Any more thoughts? Okay. Final for the public? Okay. Let's go for a vote.
Make a motion that we postpone this until our next stated meeting.
Second.
I call for a vote. All those in favor of the postponement to the next meeting in September?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor? I mean, opposed, you guys are getting ahead of me. Okay. So, we've approved the postponement to the next meeting. Thanks David.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. We'll beat that one to death. Six D.
All right, so we have item six D, preliminary subdivision plot twenty-four thirty-five, major preliminary plot of subdivision creating ninety-eight residential lots, common area and rights of way in the Wax Myrtle neighborhood of Waterside. Planning Commission recommended approval for the major amendment entitling this development May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and the development passed second reading at City Council on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The subdivision will be accessed by Grand Meadow Drive. Total area of the subdivision is twenty-four point eighty-nine acres. Subject property is two lots of record and is currently zoned PDD, and the parcel is unused and vacant. All residential lots are intended for construction of single-family residences, the smallest lot being five thousand one hundred and thirty square feet, and the largest lot size being twelve thousand forty-three square feet. The density of the subdivision is three point nine four dwelling units per acre. All setbacks conform to the standards of the Parkway PDD. This plot will be continuing Grand Meadow Drive and creates Fortunate Way and Shepherd Way, which are all thirty-foot wide private rights of way. All new roadways will meet complete street requirements designed to city standards, and it does meet development regulations, and no issues at the staff level.
This community is ungated, is that true? There's...
Correct.
Yeah, because question rose because of private rights of way.
Yeah, there has been no gate proposed at this location.
Any discussion by commissioners? Comments? Do you have any input from the public? No? If we're ready, we can call for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning commission approves the majority, the major preliminary plot subdivision, sub twenty-four dash thirty-five, prepared for Wax Myrtle at Waterside as submitted.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Finally, six E.
All right, so item six E, preliminary subdivision plot, S U B twenty-five twenty-four, subdivision creating twenty, two hundred and thirty-five residential lots, open space, rights of way at the, in the retreat at the preserve. Planning Commission recommended approval of the major amendment creating the preserve at their meeting on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The preliminary plot for the paired village section of development was approved on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. At the April seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting, City Council approved major amendment to entitle the retreat at the preserve in its current configuration. This will be accessed by Henry Road, and total area of the subdivision is twenty-eight point ninety-four acres. The subject property is one lot of record, and to clarify the pin question that came up earlier, so there was a subdivision plot that came in, so this, at the time, this was the correct pin, but after the subdivision plot, there were two new pins created. And the property is zoned PDD, currently, the parcel is unused and vacant. The lots are intended for residential development, the smallest lot size being one thousand five hundred eleven square feet, and the largest lot size is two thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet. The density of the subdivision is eight point twelve dwelling units per acre. All setbacks conform to the standards of the Parkway PDD, and this plot includes the creation of the following private streets, Steel Sky Drive, fifty-four feet wide, Sunfish Court, sixty-six feet wide, Long Branch Loop, sixty-six feet wide, and Atlantic Coast Alley, forty-five feet wide. It also includes the following twenty-five but wide private alleys, bear with me while I list these off. Coastal Haven Alley, Sea Spray Alley, Sea Foam Alley, Shell Beach Alley, Sea Oats Alley, Shorebird Alley, Sandy Toes Alley, Hammock Breeze Alley, Ocean Tide Alley, Conk Alley, Nautilus Alley, Dune Grass Alley, Coastal Drift Alley, Clamshell Alley, Breezy, Breezy Palms Alley, Blue Lagoon Alley, Beach Grass Alley, Bay and Baywatch Alley. And all new roadways are designed to city standards, and it meets development regulations, and there were no issues at the staff level.
So, just to confirm, the county hasn't caught up with making appropriate changes to match the numbers? Or was opposite of what I just said?
Yeah, so, the, the pin that is listed on here...
Yep.
That was, when, at the time this was submitted, that was the correct pin.
Okay.
So, after we received the subdivision plot, they did create two new pins for the two new lots that were created.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, comments, questions? I believe the developers here, any questions?
I believe this is the property that, one, the, the original plan for this idea and the scope of the number of units that are in here were part of the original PDD a long time ago, so we're, as we've gone through the progressions and all, I think it is that the actual number of units that was really involved in this in the very first has been reduced to a very small amount, not a whole lot of amount, so it's, the basic framework of this whole thing has been on the board and approved for a long time. Of course, you all, we remember, we, this open space that we have shown here, originally it was an idea of being some commercial space, now it's just going to be open space, and we've been around with this one for quite a few, quite a few trips, so I think, kind of, not the best we're going to end up with.
Yep. If we beat it to this. All right, any comments from the public? There's no public here to comment.
Josh is out there, he could, he could comment it if he'd like.
Yeah. I don't know, unless we get into lot sizes or something. All right then, let's call for a vote.
Motion.
Go, go ahead. Have you viewed that page?
I'll make a motion that we approve the major preliminary plot of subdivision as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Six F.
Okay, item six F, minor PDD amendment Z twenty-five dash fourteen. This is a minor amendment to the Bahama Island PDD, increasing the allowed building height for the piano lot residences located along the waterway. This neighborhood was approved by City Council, April seventh, twenty twenty-five. The original incarnation was an RV resort, then it got converted to a single-family residential neighborhood called Long Bay Village. That's a hundred and thirty-seven lots with thirty-five waterfront lots with private docks. Within the PDD, there's a table that called out the height on these piano lots at thirty-five feet, and these elevations included in the packet are not changing, but they were approved in the original entitlement. And due to how we calculate height, the height needs to be increased to accommodate these elevations to fifty-two feet without regard to the floodplain, max height fifty-two feet from grade. And that's what this proposed amendment is.
So, just to reconfirm Suzanne, this morning, will it just be the P thirty-five lots on the front?
Correct.
That'll be allowed to go to that, along the water for being that it's part in and out of the floodplain?
Yes, and all of them on raised garages with parking as the first floor.
Just to confirm that there's, the pilings is what's taking up the height, not the structure.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Think it's reasonable.
Which one of those homes was causing the problem, do you know? Or was it the...
It's the fact that the piano lot, some of them sit further back, so almost all of them, because just depending on where the floodplain was, the, you know, some of them, the, the home is on the waterway, and then it's next to one with the home not on the waterway, so all of those that were not on the waterway would have been taller than thirty-five feet, because they were not in the flood zone, the building pad would not be in the flood zone, because they are furthest away from the waterway. Do you want me to pull up what we approved for that?
So, basically, the idea is that houses adjacent to the waterway will be a little bit lower than the ones that are on the back piano lots. Is that correct?
Let me just pull up the City Council agenda from that meeting. I'm trying to zoom in, it's not, and then it does. So, the way the piano key lots work, so the house back here is not in the floodplain.
Not in the floodplain, so it would be lower to the ground, right?
No, it would still use these footprints along the waterway for all of those lots, but the height would be calculated from grade instead of the first finished floor. We only count from the first finished floor when it's actually in the flood zone, yeah. So, all of, all of the houses along the waterway would make use of these elevations. There are some single story that are not raised, on raised pilings, and those would be used behind the waterway on these other lots. But all of, all of the waterfront lots would make use of those elevations on the raised pilings.
Sixteen, and they say each floors, if they did ten-foot ceilings with the frame, it'd be maximum, but if you had twelve feet, and then twelve feet, and then twelve feet, and then these high pitched roofs, I mean, you're looking at getting up to that.
But the main reason for doing this is because the flood zone and the non-flood zone were at, they could do, they had different requirements, so this is just...
If you're in the flood zone, see, they get underneath free. You're starting to count above it. But if I'm behind it, then I can't put my parking underneath, because I'm going to bust that height out.
I was five minutes late to the workshop and I missed all that.
I'm sorry, I should, I totally forgot that you were not there at the very beginning.
Got to know.
I'd make sure we all understood it, but that's kind of the, yeah, that you can put same elevation on this lot and then on the...
Yeah, all of the elevations that are depicted and were approved are the ones that are going to be used, it's just that the height for these houses has to be increased.
It's going to bust, be easy, you know? If you're, you know, fourteen, fifteen to that first floor, get out of the floodplain, they're, even their elevation of, right at the flood elevation of twelve...
So, then we added...
Two feet ahead of that, so that'd be seventeen feet right there.
And we added the language so that the guy on the front in the flood can't go fifty-two on top of his seventeen feet.
Right, if they are in the flood zone, they still are limited to that fifty-two feet from grade.
So, it doesn't, it goes back to they get what was originally intended, the ones behind them get to do what?
Same, the same.
The same height house. But there was a language change.
Yeah, there's a footnote added, without regard to the floodplain, the maximum height is fifty-two feet from grade for the piano lot.
We made this morning that we thought would get us where we needed to be.
Everyone understands what's going on?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Okay, any comments? No? All right, I'll call for a vote.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
I move that the planning commission approves the minor planned development district amendment to the Bahama Island PDD, Z dash twenty-five dash fourteen, as submitted.
Excuse me, as amended.
As amended, excuse me. I retract that, as amended.
I second that.
All right, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
And then, the last item on our agenda tonight is item six G, and we're just requesting postponement to the September meeting. It's a DA for the Lorette tract, and a first amendment to the DA for the Lorette tract.
Do we need to make a motion about that or whatever? Mr. Chairman, I move we postpone item six G on the agenda to the next meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Those, ayes have it. Any, uh, further comments by the commissioners? Anyone out in the public like to address the commission? Okay, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those. Ayes have it. Thank you, everyone.